Whenever you're ready, Mr. President.
All right, roll call. Jerem?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Pauls? Is not here. Oh, he did?
He's here, here.
Ah, gotta speak up, you know. Thompson?
Here.
Gurnett?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Please rise for the Pledgeable Agent's Denunciation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We can bow our heads just for a second, please. Dear Lord, please help us as we continue to decide matters for the city of Omaha and make sure that we are doing the best possible job that we possibly can for the citizens of Omaha and that you will continue to lead and guide us as we continue to move forward. Amen.
City Clerk certified publication on daily record on August 16th, November 14th, council and regular city council meeting, August 20th, 2013. A current copy of the Meeting's Acts is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions may only attract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. We do have two items to take care of before we get started with the regular agenda. I'll do this one first because it's a little bit shorter. We'd like to recognize Todd Andrews from Channel 7 on his last official day at work at Channel 7. We've often joked with him that he's the eighth council member. He's down here so frequently and has done a great job covering city business for the citizens of Omaha. So, we appreciate that and wish you well on your new job with OPS.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. President, could I have just a quick word?
Please.
I like to go on record as saying that I think Todd is one of the best in his field and he's one of the fairest of the reporters and so I think we're losing a good one.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize representatives here from the Humane Society. We've received a great honor on their behalf that reflects well upon our community. So, Mark and Judy or whoever else, yeah, Judy's here and Pam, if you want to come down. We have a proclamation to read and then certainly if you want to add any remarks or thoughts you may have at the podium there, we can do that too. So, the proclamation from the city council reads as such. Whereas the Nebraska Humane Society was founded in 1875 and is the fifth oldest humane society in the United States, and whereas the Nebraska Humane Society provides education to the public, gives sanctuary to animals, encourages pet adoption, and promotes responsible pet ownership, and whereas the Nebraska Humane Society provides animal control services to Omaha and several other jurisdictions in the area, and whereas citizens throughout the area benefit from the consistently exceptional animal control services provided by the Nebraska Humane Society, and whereas the National Animal Control Association selected the Nebraska Humane Society as the nation's 2012 Outstanding Animal Control Agency, recognizing its exceptional response times, animal cruelty investigations, animal control officer and dog bite prevention training programs, as well as its participation in community programs seeking to prevent domestic violence, hoarding, and other housing-related problems, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Omaha that the Nebraska Humane Society is recognized and congratulated by providing exceptional animal control services and for its excellence in fulfilling other aspects of its mission that serve to improve the quality of life for Omaha's citizens. Thank you very much for your work.
I would just like to say that we live in Omaha because we choose to live in Omaha and Omaha deserves only the best and that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
You bet. I have a copy here for you and councilmembers, if you have anything to offer, you're certainly welcome to do that.
I'm speaking for all the sugar gliders and hedgehog.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Resolution Ray Platt subdivision agreements pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held September 3rd. Agenda items number five shall be laid over three weeks to September 10th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, agenda item number six shall be laid over three weeks until September 10th, 2013. Liquor, item number seven and eight are one case. Seven is Pizon's Pizzeria, 156-19 West Center Road, Class C liquor license and application, new location, and eight is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearings on items number seven and eight are today. Proponents, Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly. 7134 Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of GGP Enterprises LLC. This is a pizza takeout restaurant and with small on-premise dining. We are here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem? Melton?
Yes.
Pauls? Thompson?
Yeah.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Or Gray, Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict interest. It's adopted 6-0-1 passing.
Thank you.
Item number nine, The Urban Wine Company, 1037 Jones Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on item number nine is today. Proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of Van De Wall Urban Quest LLC, same operation in the South Old Market and we're here for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem? And passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. It passed, or it's adopted 6-0-1 passing. Item number 10, Florence Food Mart and Gas, 9516 Calhoun Road, package liquor license and application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Pam and Dale Cummings, we are the owners and applicants for this liquor license. Answer any questions? Oh, 95, the address of the business, 9516 Calhoun Road, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Before you leave the microphone, I'll ask you a question before we give opponents an opportunity here. So, I had a question from a neighbor, this is my district, who just wanted to make sure that the intention was with the purchase of the store and the Class D license to only serve off-sale, no on-sale, obviously with the Class D or no future intention to do on-sale. Is that true?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. And thanks for your investment up there in Florence. We appreciate all that you do there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Any opponents? I think we've answered your question, it sounds like. Thanks for coming. Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Will be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7-0.
Thank you.
Item number 11, The Sidney at 5918 Maple Street, request permission to appoint Ryan Albers manager.
Public hearing on item number 11 is today. Are there any proponents?
Hello, everybody. I'm Ryan Albers. I am the person that is going to be appointed the manager, so I'm here today. That's 5918 Maple Street, The Sidney.
Great, thank you. Are there any, are the other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed? Second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7-0. Item number 12, Knolls Golf Course, 11630 Sailor Street, request permission to appoint Robert Baber, manager of the present Class I liquor license.
Bob Baber, Sea of Omaha Golf Manager, here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bob. I'll officially call the public hearing on item number 12. Proponents, which is you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. Baber, I had concern earlier today about your application. That's my understanding, you graduated from Gross High School?
Correct.
So, want to make sure you can manage this responsibly.
I'll do my best, sir.
Okay. I think you've addressed his concerns.
Ms. Melton?
That's okay. I have no problem with you going to Gross High School.
That's okay. That would be a serious question.
No, actually, it was just a comment. I was just talking to some neighbors in the Roanoke neighborhood and people that live along the golf course who said that the golf course looks wonderful. This year was, really, they've been pleased. They love to look out. Some of the trees have gotten cut down. There's no longer any more garbage and they love living on the Knolls now and they appreciate it and I want to just thank you.
You bet.
For what you're doing out there. The course looks great.
Good, thanks, good to hear. That's what we're striving to do.
All right. So, yes, a motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved 7-0. We'll take items 13 and 14 for one public hearing, separate votes. Item 13 is a resolution that the hearing shall be held on August 24th, 2013, or subsequent date agreed to by the licensee and the city attorney to determine if the Class C retail liquor license held by Maria Sangria at 302 South 11th Street should be canceled. 14 is a resolution that Nebraska Liquor Control Commission is hereby requested to require Maria Sangria at 302 South 11th Street to submit a formal application before its Class C liquor license renewed for the 2013-14 licensing year.
Hi, Captain Kathy Gonzalez, Southeast Precinct, 505 South 15th Street.
Thank you, Captain Gonzalez. Let me call it up here. The public hearing on items number 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, Captain Gonzalez, as was stated, go ahead.
Thanks. I brought along with me Officer Smith. He's in the mounted patrol unit. They do a lot of patrols down the Old Market. We've had several instances down the Old Market area since Maria Sangria took their liquor license back in March. Saturday, March 16th, officers were on routine patrol when they heard yelling between two male parties in front of the door. Officers arrested both parties that were highly intoxicated, advised that they were drinking inside of the bar prior to the altercation. Tavern report was completed. On Monday, the 19th of May, officers were driving by again Maria Sangria and a fight broke out in the entryway. The fight spilled out into the street. This fight was between the actual security guards at the bar and one of the customers. Both parties stated that they wanted to walk away and that they did not want any problems. What we're seeing consistently is especially on Saturday evenings, we're getting large fight disturbances down in the area. We've already been to the Law Commission or the Committee several times in regards to the establishment. It's utilizing several of our resources down there. Another example would have been on Saturday, the 22nd of June, large crowd disturbance leaving Maria Sangria. The gang unit was long seen along with the mounted patrol, two sergeants and a lieutenant. A firearm was recovered from the parking lot. Just east of the bar, several disorderly conduct arrests were made. The crowd was very large and very uncooperative. Officers had to shut down the street from Harney to Farnham on 11th Street. Officers had to shut down the street so many times that barricades were actually left on the street corners. The officers had to grab those and help closing down specifically directly and type of that. We actually had to order barricades down. This will be the second year in a row for that specific area just to ensure that there's safety issues with people driving through the area and that they're not rounding back and forth through the Old Market. Another instance would have been Sunday, July 7th, at 1:10 in the morning, officers were called for crowd control. 150 people were standing, blocking the entire sidewalk, forcing people to cross the street and use the other side. Several documented gang members were mixed inside the crowd. A large fight broke out. At the same time, the crowd began to yell, causing more officers to be called to the scene. The street again had to be completely shut down and the crowd refused to disperse and required significant police presence to get people moving along. We had a meeting in June with all the stakeholders that were in the Old Market area, including Maria Scalisi, asking basically for cooperation, to increase security, to maybe change what the venue was providing. At that time, she did agree to it, but I will tell you that I received an email from O's Dining and said that basically it was not a restaurant, that in fact the situation had continued, that it was a nightclub and it was causing problems to the area. That was the end of June that he sent that. His establishment was denied a liquor permit basically because of the area that was down there and we were trying to make sure that that specific area didn't draw large crowds. July 3rd, we received a flyer. We have intel group that had sent, and I think you guys maybe have that in your packet, of a promoter which goes against our liquor license. So, I'm here basically to testify to the fact that we are utilizing a large amount of resources down there to ensure that the area is safe. We have gotten several complaints, not only from the area residents, but also the businesses that are in that area, asking what can be done to alleviate the situation. When the officers stated that when the bar stopped, there was a period of time that the bar did not have any events, that the crowds actually were diminished, and so we can pretty much attribute it to the fact that when they have events, then we're getting large groups of people down there that are causing reckless. Any questions?
I think we may, but we'll probably go through the public hearing here first. Thank you. Any other proponents for 13 and 14? Seeing none, opponents? Is there, is there more proponents? Yeah, are you a proponent, Arnie? Do you favor long-forming the liquor license? Are you in favor of number 13 and 14, which is the long form?
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that? Okay, please come down and then we'll do opponents.
Arnold Bresslow, 1240 South 10th Street, President of Old Market South Neighborhood Association. I have been receiving from business owners as well as apartment owners information to me as president of their association. Several calls, the apartment calls are pretty paranoid. I mean, they are at a state of almost hysteria with what's going on in the Old Market and I really feel that it is of the utmost importance to not only the Old Market but the downtown community to deal with this problem as fast as possible because of the fact that we have to some degree an image problem in West Omaha to start with and before long, we're going to have an image problem throughout the city. And people are not only going to not frequent the market, they're not going to frequent NODO, they're not going to frequent South Omaha, areas where we've invested a lot of time, energy, and money, all of us, not only just you but all the neighborhood associations in order to try to improve that area of the city and make it one of the best places actually in the country to come visit. And this is working absolutely contradictory to it and it's time, whether we use the state or the good neighbor ordinance that's been passed, to get this under control. I think it needs to be done quickly, not in three months, not in six months. I'd like to see it tomorrow, but that ain't going to happen. So, the sooner the better and I know you guys understand all of it. I've talked to several of you, but I just thought I should go on the record and let you know that it is really, I mean, when these people call that own apartments, I mean, they're scared and people in the city of Omaha shouldn't be scared of anything. And we don't run that kind of community. We haven't had that kind of community and it's time for us to step up and do whatever it takes to stop that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
My name is Mark Welsh, 5611 Howard Street. Didn't know I was going to testify on this today, but I'm just curious if, if I heard the officer correctly, she said the first instance was two people that got drunk inside that business that were then outside fighting. Now, if that's the root cause of the problem, that people are getting obviously drunk inside that business, why don't the police go inside that business in plain clothes or in their official garb and watch the people that are serving the alcohol and prevent the problem? If they stopped the bartender and the waiter or waitresses from selling to obviously drunk people, which is a crime in this state, then you won't have the drunks spilling out into the street way over intoxicated. So, I guess I'm just saying that a little prevention would be worth a lot of a cure and maybe that's something that the city and the police department should take an interest in and recommend to the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, opponents?
Good afternoon. Jeremy Jorgensen, 319 South 17th Street. I represent Maria Sangria. I'm speaking as an opponent today, however, I suppose we're not going to say anything that's going to stop you from passing the resolutions. We're going to move forward on them, but what I am here to inform you of is that on August 15th, Maria Sangria received a letter, a notice to abate. Prior to receiving that letter, I'd had discussions with a couple folks on the city council and we'd started this conversation at Maria Sangria on what they were willing to do to change. I think that they're certainly open to changing. I think that the nightclub upstairs, that may or may not have been the cause, it may have been a contribution, we don't necessarily know, that's not going to exist anymore. Maria Sangria is going to operate as simply a sit-down restaurant. Perhaps they'll have some live music on occasions during dining hours. All of the things in this notice to abate are things that Maria Sangria had began discussing prior to receiving the notice to abate. So, we understand the resolution will very likely go forward today and pass. Maria Sangria, Maria Scalisi is willing to fill out the long form. She's in the process of looking at new management. Certainly, you know, without coming here and admitting that she is the source of the problem, one thing that she'd like to point out is that that's a corner of probably the most profitable restaurant and bar district in the state of Nebraska and to have to shut it down without attempting to rebrand and find new management, I think would be probably a misstep for the city. I think that what she can offer, it's, I suppose, sort of a Chef Gordon Ramsay move that she's making. The food is great, the nightclub isn't. The nightclub's not helping at all. So, she would like to move forward on the resolutions and show the city council that she's serious about making the changes necessary so she can operate her business. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing and we have some questions. Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really don't have any questions. I just want to give, especially to new members of, on the city council, my colleagues and those of you who are now in the liquor, on the liquor committee. I was formerly on the liquor committee, but I wanted to give you all some background because I'm absolutely in support of this and do intend to vote for it. We, you know, as the, as the attorney said, he said they wanted to rebrand. When they came before the liquor committee over a year ago, that was their intent was to rebrand. And Councilmember Thompson, I'm sure you remember, they had that, we had that discussion and said you needed to rebrand, you needed to not have a, so much of a nightclub. We were promised that it was not going to be a nightclub, that it was going to be mostly a restaurant. And from that time forward, most of what has gone on has been a nightclub and not a restaurant. So, we've been dealing with this for a long period of time to find new management, rebrand and all those kinds of things. The fact of the matter is, is that I've heard that story on at least three different occasions now and I'm tired of hearing it, quite frankly. So, I'm supportive of this. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward. The history is clear. These individuals have promised us over and over and over again and I think we, the citizens of this community, we have, we had citizens that, that took it upon themselves to create an ordinance to address the alcohol problems that they were feeling that existed across several portions of this, of this city and this community, that they were so fed up about it that they went and created their own ordinance. Councilmember Jerem and I started working with them to help them hone down that ordinance, but we do now have one that can pull the occupancy permit if necessary and I believe that's the letter that they're referring to about August, that went out on August 15th. But the fact of the matter is, you know, they've talked about being open to change, but they've talked about that on a number of occasions. They've talked about rebranding, but they've talked about that on a number of occasions. They've talked about finding new management. They've talked about that on a number of occasions. I was one of the largest supporters of this group going in and now I don't see any reason why we should not move forward with making them fill out the long form and I'm prepared to go if necessary to do whatever is necessary to pull their occupancy permit and/or their liquor license. This, this group has shown over and over again to me that their intent is not to follow what we have asked them to do on numerous occasions, so I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward and asking for the long form and moving forward with the letter that, that will pull their occupancy permit if they don't, if they don't comply. I will come back with a motion a little later, Mr. President. There may be some others who might want to speak, but I don't have any questions for anybody. I've been down this road too many times before and I personally don't intend to go down this road again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No further lights?
Motion, motion approved.
Roll call.
We'll take separate votes on the motion. This will be on item 13.
And this will be the long form?
No, this is 13 where we're determined if we should cancel the license.
Motion approved, number 13.
We have a second. Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. It's adopted 6-0-1 passing. Now, on item 14, which is the long form?
Motion to approve, item 14.
Roll call.
Jerem? Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. It's adopted 6-0-1 passing.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed as otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 15 through 19 were held on August 13th, 2013. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President? Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 20 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty through 27 are adopted seven to zero. Resolutions, item number 28, resolution that tests Capitol District Tax Infinancing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at northwest and southwest corners of 10th and Capitol Street, which represents an urban mixed-use redevelopment project within the downtown Omaha that contemplates a 350-room full-service hotel adjacent to the city of Omaha, the arena and convention center, CenturyLink Center, Omaha, as well as an additional development component such as retail, office, and residential structures, and a parking structure recommending that the city participate through the allocation of tax increment finances hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 28 is today. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, City Planning, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I have a rendering up here of, a basic rendering of this particular project plan. This particular project plan does support or is in response to a 20, August 2011 response proposal, or request for proposal, rather, that the city issued for this particular project. This particular project does support the 2013 Downtown Master Plan, which outlined 10 different principles, and I just wanted to take a moment just to read these principles, which I think ties into what this particular project does, as well as several projects will do. These particular principles are the backbone of the Downtown Master Plan. They do summarize the community and various community stakeholder feedback. They cover the full spectrum of socioeconomic, as well as physical and environmental concerns. The downtown Omaha should be a dominant economic engine for the region. It should be a great place to live, work, and play, and visit and learn. It should be a home to unique civic and cultural resources of the region. It should have distinct neighborhoods, districts, and corridors. It should be urban. It should have a comprehensive system of integrated diverse open spaces for public use. Should be multimodal environment where one can live every day without, everyday life without using a car. Should comprise a series of integrated Park Ones districts. Should be a model of sustainable urbanism, and should strive to cultivate a culture of design excellence. As such, this particular redevelopment project plan does realize one of the development opportunities that was identified in the Downtown Master Plan. And that particular development opportunity was in, what's called an events district. That was one of these development opportunities. That events district happens to be where this particular project is located. That events district is characterized by high-density mixed-use projects with pedestrian orientation and large open public green spaces and plazas. The district would lend itself to entertainment venues on ground floors, on the ground floors to promote and enhance retail, as well as entertainment activities. Specifically, this particular project, which is located here at 10th and Capitol, it's the northwest corner of 10th and Capitol, this being Capitol, this being 10th Street, and then this is the supplemental site, which is the southwest corner. It is designed to, and I'll give you a better picture, this particular project plan is contemplated to have at least a 350-room full-service hotel. This again is 10th Street, this is Capitol. It is, as it was already stated, approximately 250, maybe 280 apartment units. This is proposed for market rate and affordable units over on this side. This would be the retail and parking, so again, this is looking north. And then this would be office with retail underneath, and then there's, or excuse me, office and retail, and there's parking underneath and all throughout here. There would be open space in here for an open plaza, some green space over here as well. There would also be a 20,000-square-foot ballroom in this particular project. Another rendering, it's kind of a nighttime view, looking south. So this is 10th, this is the hotel, this is the office with the retail below, a little more retail, some parking, and then the multifamily housing, apartments, which more than likely would be the market rate, and then the affordable multifamily housing on this side. And then one last rendering. This is looking northwest from the supplemental site, so this is looking at the hotel, and then this would be the office component with the retail below, and then the multifamily housing going west. So again, this is in answer to a request for proposal that the city issued back in 2011, designed to activate the streets, revitalize, help continue the revitalization within the downtown area, bringing in more entertainment venues, retail venues, bringing in residential, helping with the density that the Downtown Master Plan called for. It does represent a project investment of at least $205 million and up to $35 million in TIF. The idea is that the construction would begin in the spring of 2014. The development agreement will be coming forth shortly. There are still some things to work out with the development agreement, but the goal is that all of the components, from the hotel to the market rate, as well as affordable multifamily units, the office, the retail, the garage, would all happen at once. There may be some phasing as they're all brought online. And with that, I guess I would ask for your approval. The representative of the developer is here if you have any other specific questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hadley or one of the representatives, if you, you've already given us what the dollar total is, which is, which is another necessity or reason for continuing to move forward with that kind of investment, it needs the support, you know, from this community and from, and from this council, hopefully. Could you tell me how many jobs you think would be created from this?
Um, let me see if I remember. Do you have that right? Thank you. From the full-service Marriott Hotel, about 450. Then with the parking garage, there's intended to be some jobs created there, so there's about 30 jobs that are anticipated there. With the retail mixed-use piece of it, about 100, excuse me, about 240 jobs there. With the office component, it's contemplated about 30 jobs there. With the multifamily housing piece, both the market rate, as well as the affordable housing, about 30 jobs. So a total of about 730 total jobs. If you were to add construction jobs, that would be an additional 1,000, 200, or excuse me, 1,025.
Okay. Is the developer here?
No.
No.
Developer, but the attorney is here to answer any other specific questions.
I don't know if I want to talk to Larry. Well, I'll talk to Larry shortly. I just wanted to take the opportunity, this is in my district, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for the diligent work that Ms. Hadley and Larry, all of you have done to make this come about. It is a, it's an important day for the city of Omaha. It's an important day for downtown. It's an important day for North Omaha, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for all of your efforts and all of your work, and hopefully we can continue to move forward.
Thank you. Mike Moylan was out of town today, but otherwise he would have been here, but Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of Shamrock Development, which is Mike Moylan, but he is, sends his apologies to the council for not being here on this important day, but he actually is meeting with some of the end-users on this particular project in Maryland, I believe. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Larry, just for the record, one developer, one TIF.
Well, actually, this is going to be structured in a very different way. Actually, I've kind of come up with this new way to do TIFs under the law.
Would you go on record describing this new way?
Well, this is sort of like Exarban Village, but Exarban Village couldn't do what we can do because the law changed. Exarban Village has to have each one of its own developments, has its own redevelopment plan, and then has its own redevelopment agreement, and then has its own redevelopment note associated with that particular part of the development. But overall, it's kind of this TIF district, if you will. With the law, the way it changed, you could now have multiple division dates, and by utilizing multiple division dates, you can actually have projects phased in one development agreement, and as projects come online, you would notify the county as to that division date of that particular project, and then that would, that would start the 15 years on that particular project. There's a final plat that's going to be coming before you, before too long, that subdivides this one block into five different blocks. So as these projects are phased on, there'll be multiple division dates, multiple redevelopment notes, and there may be different participation agreements as to who is entitled to receive those TIF proceeds. Part of what this was about was being able to shift some of the tax increment financing to the hotel user or owner, because the hotel was the key to this whole development, and it was the most expensive to build. At the same time, it wouldn't be valued at the level it really could be valued at, from what I understand, and talking to the experts and talking to Mike Moylan. So what this was designed to do, and which you'll see the redevelopment coming forward to you down the road, and we'll explain it, I think it's maybe a good idea to break out in smaller groups and go through the redevelopment agreement as to how it works down the road before we actually get to the council for a final vote, so you kind of understand the mechanics of how it works. But the idea is to have one redevelopment agreement with multiple division dates that provides up to amount, as far as the loan that the city will borrow from the developer, and then will be repaid, obviously, in the same fashion, in a nonrecourse manner over the 15-year period. So that's what it's designed to do. But again, I think with the new law, we can make this a lot more streamlined and much more simple than it would have otherwise been.
So we're dealing with the hotel TIF today, and then down the line?
No, this will be the whole thing. This will be the entire block.
The entire block.
Yes, it'll be, it won't be the supplemental site. That'll probably be a separate redevelopment agreement down the road.
Okay.
But everything that you see on?
Northeast corner, northwest corner.
Yes, northwest and beyond would be. So everything here is part of the first redevelopment agreement, and this is what we call the supplemental site. There's an option to, that can be exercised in the future to acquire that property and redevelop that, probably under a different redevelopment plan, redevelopment agreement, redevelopment note. The idea was here, we could just move much more efficiently in the TIF process if we had one agreement that dealt with the development as a whole, from a global perspective.
One TIF today, but we'll be getting other developmental plans?
Well, no, this is, this is the one redevelopment plan, and there'll be multiple redevelopment notes as projects come online.
Okay.
And so this one redevelopment agreement that you'll see in the future will actually provide for the future development of all of these areas. Now, some of these areas are also within a condominium property regime as well, because they sit on top of each other. So this, then we've got an overarching, what they call an easement and operation agreement that deals with the relationship of all the properties.
Okay.
Dealing with, you know, shared walls, shared common space, shared plazas, and we've provided that to Paul, and he's starting to look at that as well. So there'll be a global agreement that deals with the relationship of all the developments within this area, and then, of course, we have one redevelopment agreement that will deal with the development as it comes online.
So this is different than Exarban?
It is. I think, I think it's, and they didn't have the benefit of the law change that allowed you to do multiple division dates. So, you know, just like Swanson Park Plaza, for example, if you took that one, if we could have done that there, it would have been a different story there, too, because what you can do is you can start the 15-year date as you go, as you come online, as opposed to having one division date. The old law said that the division date began when the redevelopment plan was approved by the council.
Right.
That was really a hardship, because most of the projects couldn't come out of the ground and wouldn't be on the tax rolls at full build-out value for two and a half to three, four years sometimes. So you lost part of that 15 years. Now with the new law, it says you can have multiple division dates, you can set your notice to divide based upon when you're actually constructing. So you can utilize more of the tax increment financing, if you will, which is better for the developer, obviously, and better for the project, and it makes it more feasible. And if you believe in the BUT-4 test, that's really important.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question. When did this new law take, become in effect?
Oh, it's 2011, May of 2011.
Okay. So can we see in the future, you're going to come with these large conglomeration of plans within plans? Is that the intent?
Well, it's just one redevelopment agreement. Here's a draft of it. You know, I'd be happy to forward it to you so you can look at it, but what it, what it does upfront is it says the city shall borrow X dollars, wherever those X dollars are, we're thinking it's 35 million, right? Now, the city doesn't have to borrow up to 35 million, because if the project doesn't generate enough valuation to support the repayment of 35 million, it really does no good for the developer to actually have the city borrow that money, because the developer, if you recall, only gets paid if there's actual increment created over and above the base year, and so it doesn't make any sense to overstate or try to get more TIF than the project will support, because in the end, you don't, you don't get it, because the notes, the multiple notes that will be issued by the city to the developer or the end-user or whoever they're issued to are nonrecourse, meaning they're only payable to the extent you create increment. If you don't create increment, the developer or the owner gets nothing. So that's, that's, the city's really not out.
No, I'm not worried about the city being out. I'm just, is this a future? Is this what you're, do you anticipate doing these types of plans?
Yeah, the goal, as Bridget said, the goal is actually to get the hotel out of the ground and get the parking facility out of the ground, and the ballroom, of course, day one. If we can start the retail and some of the office, because there's an end-user to do that, I mean, obviously, you're going to have to get loans to support the ability to come out of the ground vertically, and in order to do that, you're going to have to have tenants or end-users that are willing to actually buy and develop the ground. So he, Mike's got a lot of people that he's been working with over the last few years. Actually, this project, I think I've been working on it for probably five to six to seven years with Mike, at least. So it's finally kind of coming to fruition here to get it to the point where we can actually bring it to the council for the redevelopment plan and then the redevelopment agreement eventually. And I think it'll be self-explanatory once you see the redevelopment agreement, and again, I think we should all probably sit down in little groups and go through it so you understand it, because it is a new model, if you will, and I think it's a model that is really efficient, and I think it makes more sense than to try to do it in multiple redevelopment plans, multiple redevelopment agreements. It's just more confusing that way, I think.
Excuse me, if I could just add to this, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, maybe to also answer your question, this works for this particular project because it has so many different components that are being built, from a hotel to multifamily housing to office to garage. So that's why this is being used on this particular project, but our normal TIF projects usually only have maybe one or two buildings going forward, so.
So what you're telling me, typically, we do the quote, the normal way? Or not normal way, but the?
This is the way it is typically, with just one project plan and one agreement. And as Larry said, because of the law, even though this one has a lot of components in it, we can still do one project plan and one agreement.
Thank you.
I think that's the key to this, is that there's really multiple development projects occurring, not exactly at the same time, sort of at the same time, and it's too big of a project to have one redevelopment note, one redevelopment agreement, or, you know, one redevelopment note. I think you need to break them up, because you're going to need to shift that revenue stream amongst the various developers within this district, just as Exarban does, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just add at this juncture, too, that it has been a long and complicated process, I know, for you, and we appreciate your patience and steadfastness in bringing this project to fruition, because it is a huge investment in Omaha that wouldn't happen without something like this. And when you talk about the Omaha World Herald article recently about how we need more jobs downtown, this is 730 jobs in a project like this, and that's a big boost for downtown Omaha and everything we're trying to accomplish. One question, Ms. Hadley, you said construction in 2014 starts, so when are we anticipating completion? I'm not sure I caught that.
Well, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, construction beginning is anticipated for spring of 2014, and completion taking roughly maybe about two years.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I think if, not to put any pressure on Cassie Segren up there, but if you could come down, I think Cassie could probably answer your question, and I was surprised Larry didn't take the opportunity to pounce on the potential for using this type of TIF at other large-scale projects, because I immediately thought of the potential for the civic auditorium, Exarban Village South and west and around the cancer center, but maybe Cassie could weigh in.
Cassie Segren, Mayor's Office, to kind of answer the question in terms of, will
To kind of answer the question in terms of, will this type of TIF project be typical in the future on larger mixed-use developments? It makes sense, especially when you have multiple components. Ideally, it would make the most sense when you have these larger projects to do it this way rather than to break it up and have every single project come in as it's phased in. The projects that Councilman Jaram just mentioned would definitely be ones that we would look at in the future of also using this approach.
Thank you. And it just, if you can see the way these things get put together, if you don't have this flexibility to do that master agreement within, as I call them, the different start dates, then if you're a potential end user developing within the development, then what's, the clock ticks from day one, and your incentive to meet the BUT4 goes down every year in the 15. So Larry, did you have anything?
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, after all that, maybe I should copyright this.
Thank you. Mr. Gernant?
Certainly that this is an awesome project, 700-plus jobs, but I hope someone from Metro or bus company is listening today because our north-south route, at least, and that's why I'm rising as representative from District Four to speak, that we lost two bus routes going into our area. And for those that are seeking employment and in need of public transportation, I would hope that someone from Metro is watching today and would like to partake in the discussions and probably reviving some bus routes in that particular area. We also have a Betts Village that's going to be opening soon down on 10th Street, and I'm sure employment is going to be high there as well. And we don't even have a bus that goes by there anymore. So again, Metro, if you're listening, this would be something good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Jaram?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 29, resolution attached Cypress Point to tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for the redevelopment project site compromising 3.5 acres of developed land located southwest corner of 60th and Hartman Avenue for the construction of two, three-story 40-unit buildings, recommending the city's participation through the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 29 is today. Proponents?
Bridgette Hadley City Planning, this particular project is located at central northwest Omaha, or maybe even north-central Omaha. Here's 60th Street, and then this is Hartman Avenue. It's this area on the southwest corner of this outline, kind of in black. It's part of the Cypress Point redevelopment site. It was originally 8.5 or eight-acre site, and this particular portion was unable to be finished because of financial resources that were limited. We were able to step forward with TIF to help this project move forward. It represents 80 units of apartments that will be developed for seniors 55 years and older. Excuse me. It will be two, three-story apartment units, and I think that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I did go to the groundbreaking that was held Friday that the mayor spoke at for the duplexes, and they're very nice, so I know that the finished product for the apartment units will complement the whole area and community in that area. There are some senior housing units that were also a TIF project further south and east called the James Tinsley Apartments. Of course, there are some senior housing apartments that were built by Emmanuel going north and west a little bit up there. So there's a lot of senior housing in that area. We've been told by at least Cypress Point or Excel Development, who is the developer on this project, that they at least have a waiting list of 200 people. So we know that, at least in the city of Omaha, we know there is a need and a strong demand for senior housing, and this particular project helps to fulfill that. So if, I guess I do have a few renderings, because I think your pictures in there were a little hard to see in black and white. That's one of the renderings. There's another of what the apartment units will look like. And just one more. So you can kind of get an idea of the finished product. So with that, I guess I would ask for your approval. I believe the representative of the developer is here from Lincoln, Paula Ryan. I believe she made it, but otherwise, I just ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a real quick, what is the, how many jobs and what is the investment?
On this particular project, there are not a lot of jobs that are created because it's housing-related.
Housing.
And in most cases, the housing-type jobs, or excuse me, projects do not generate a lot of jobs. But in term, let's see if I have a number at all. Well, I don't think we had a number for that, but it does represent a little over, close to 10 million in investment to the city, and the amount of the TIF is 668,000, a little over 668,000.
And you're the developer?
Yes.
Okay. If you could come down, please, for me real quickly.
Yeah.
Paula Ryan, Excel Development Group, 8551 Lexington Avenue in Lincoln.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. First of all, thank you for considering that area for development. It was in pretty bad need of that, and we, as Bridgette has pointed out, there are, you have a waiting list of folks.
Up over 225. They keep calling. We had our ribbon cutting for the first phase on Friday that Bridgette talked about, and we will have, those first 24 units will be leased by the end of September. We're almost full, and the phones keep ringing.
Okay. I would also encourage you, if you could, we have a small emerging business ordinance here where we, you know, try to engage small businesses in projects like this, so I would encourage you to look that up if you could, and wherever possible, put, you know, some of the smaller contractors to work as well. But this is a dynamic project, and thank you for the consideration in this area.
Thank you. We've been very pleased. We developed James Tinsley Villas almost 10 years ago, and we are, we're full there. We have projects all across Omaha, and it's been wonderful, but the need is very great. And I know we do contract locally with some very small businesses that do some of our maintenance and our lawn care. So we do, and I know we will bid out locally.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jaram?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on items number 30 through 38 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item 39, ordinance declaring necessity requiring private property for the purpose of constructing the Gilmore Avenue Sewer Separation Project.
Public hearing on item number 39 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 40, ordinance declaring necessity requiring private property for the 62nd and Buckingham Sewer Improvement Project.
Public hearing on item number 40 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 41, ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement between the city and Omaha Economic Development Corporation to implement the fair deal urban design Phase II tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located along 25th Street between Patrick Avenue and Blondo Streets.
Public hearing on item number 41 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 42, ordinance approving redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement with LFS AK to implement the Exarban MU project at 72nd and Popleton Streets, tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located between 70th and 72nd, between Popleton and Pine Streets in the Exarban Village, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 42 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 43, ordinance approving and authorizing purchase order to Great Plains Realty Auction Company or Auctionary Services, the Omaha Police Department impound facility.
Public hearing on item number 43 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 44, ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code Sections 12, 136, 39, 141, and 142 regarding license for the sale of tobacco products to allow for the sale of tobacco products at a temporary location.
Public hearing on item number 44 is today. Any proponents? Mr. Moylan?
Hi, I'm Jim Moylan, the attorney for the Nebraska License Beverage Association. We're here in support of this. As you know, a lot of the liquor licensees have catering license, and they do catering all over town, and it would be a convenience if they could go ahead and sell their tobacco products at the same time. So a couple of them asked me to come down here as part of the association and support it. So any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And you're probably the proud father of Shamrock Development, right?
That's what I hear.
Tell them you did well today.
Thank you, Pete.
All right. Thank you. Any other proponents for now?
Charles Klein, 503 South 11th Street, as a proponent. I had approached Councilman Jaram earlier about this ordinance, and the primary purpose for us as a tobacco retailer and wholesaler, we've been asked many times through nonprofits, benefits, private entities, so forth, that if we would come out and host a cigar event, either through specialized hand-rolling cigars or through just the providing of other cigars. And they're adult-oriented events, and the purpose for them is to educate and to show people the qualities of the actual cigar, which is our intent, is to provide cigars at these events.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none. Opponents?
Hello, my name is Mark Welsh. I'm the president of GASP of Nebraska, the Group to Alleviate Smoking Pollution, and I had the pleasure of meeting Chaz today, and we had a good conversation, and I intend to talk with him more during the next week before you may vote on this next week. In the, the main problem that GASP and I have with this proposed ordinance is the very drastic and negative impact that it could have by changing city policy. That change would be to allow tobacco sales in city parks, on city property, on our city streets, and on our sidewalks. I don't think that that state, that our current state law allows that. I think your city attorney has a different opinion. So what I'd like to suggest, if you do continue to consider this, is to add a definition, and that definition would read something like this, designated location, which is mentioned in your new item four under Section 12-136, under definitions. It says, "Temporary sales location shall mean a designated location where tobacco products are sold at retail for a period not to exceed six consecutive days." Now, but you don't define what is a designated location, so you could make me very happy and protect the family nature of our city parks by simply saying, "A designated location is or shall be inside a business building or on business property. It may not be on any city-owned leased or controlled property. It may not be on any city street or sidewalk." If you make that change, you'd go a long ways to solving the problems that I have with this. Now, there's a, you know, Tom Mumgarde, in a letter that you've all received, seems to give more than just a nod to my interpretation of the state law when he says, and I quote, "So there's some room for a court to say that state law implies sales can be made only at the location listed on the state-sanctioned license. Whether such an implication gives the, quote, 'direct conflict,' unquote, that's prohibited, is an open question." So I think you need this kind of definition to avoid a future court case. You know, the last thing that we need are more city expenses due to an ordinance that isn't just crystal clear on what you allow and what you do not allow. As you may know from my notes that I've sent to the council, Baker's Supermarket back in 1996 was caught selling tobacco multiple times to children, and because of an ordinance that I helped write back in 93, they would have had to stop selling tobacco for a day or up to a week. I don't remember what the penalty was, but they sued so they could continue to sell tobacco, and they won. And the ruling basically said that the city can't change, can't restrict the state tobacco license because there is only a state tobacco license that the city does administer for the state. So those are the points that I'd like to make today, and I intend to continue to talk with Chaz and I hope, hopefully, with you and the Law Department to plug the hole that I see to keep our city parks and property free of tobacco vendors, because I watched outside of, on a public area outside of Westside High School, this is going back a few years, there was a tobacco retailer across the street from Westside High School, and I saw a big burly, looked like the lineman on their football team, walk into this retail store that sold tobacco, and he came out literally with his hands like this, almost, you know, looked like he was going to crush a bunch of cigarettes. I couldn't count how many packs he had there, but as he went outside, all these little kids came up to him and took their packs of cigarettes. Other little kids came up to him, gave him money. He went back inside, came back out again with his hands full of tobacco cigarette, you know, packs of cigarettes, and those kids took their cigarettes from him because he was obviously 18 years of age. Now, if you don't put in this new definition and you don't restrict it from city property, you know, Gallagher Park is right across the street from Benson High School. So somebody, anybody, doesn't have to be a business owner, anybody with a social security number can get a tobacco license, and they could set up in Gallagher Park, right outside Gallagher Pool. And then, you know, when the school closes for the day, they could be there with their push cart with tobacco and sell to every 18-year-old that comes along, and I can just imagine them getting a fistful of cigarettes and selling them to the 14, 15, 16, and 17-year-olds that are right there behind them, and then doing that again and again. And that's a business I think the city doesn't want to encourage. In fact, I think that's a business that you should make the very small modification to this ordinance before you pass it so that cannot happen in the city of Omaha. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. My name's Michael Robinson, representing Motak, also known as, well, Metropolitan Omaha Tobacco Action Coalition. I'm the executive board chair for the coalition. Motak is here today in opposition to amend the Omaha Municipal Code Sections 12-136, 12-139, 12-141, and 12-142. We feel as though that allowing a temporary sales location license at festivals would undermine a tobacco prevention and control efforts that have been successful over the years. Motak has worked in collaboration with many organizations throughout the metro area to help our communities become healthier in regards to tobacco use. Our efforts to prevent youth from using tobacco will be undermined with the passing of this ordinance. The example given to this issue with the ordinance was to allow tobacco retailers to sell at festivals. Majority of the festivals and outdoor events that occur in our city are family-oriented. Allowing to sell tobacco products at these festivals will encourage our youth that smoking is an acceptable behavior. Motak works in collaboration with many youth organizations and school districts to reach students and educate them on the dangers of smoking. Even though we educate students, it is well-versed in research that youth model the behaviors of adults. Allowing this ordinance to pass will cause disconnect in which we teach our youth versus this ordinance. Tobacco use still remains the leading preventable cause of death in the United States. In two thousand eleven, forty-six thousand seven hundred Nebraskans, which includes individuals who are exposed to secondhand smoke, suffered from smoking attributable illnesses like lung cancer, heart disease, and asthma. Because of the passing of Clean Indoor Air Act in two thousand nine, many believe that the issue with secondhand smoke exposure has been taken care of. This is not so. We still have to take into consideration the amount of secondhand smoke exposure in outdoor areas. According to our study conducted at Stanford University, secondhand smoke levels in outdoor areas can equal the amounts found in areas where smoke is allowed inside. The recommended minimum distance for someone not to be affected by secondhand smoke in outdoor areas is about twenty feet, but that would be dependent on the number of smokers and the direction and speed of the wind. Again, this would affect everyone in attendance at a family-oriented event. Events that have been smoke-free, some examples are just the Heartland Pride Festival, Thrive Omaha events, as well as the most recent Young Professionals BBQ. If this ordinance is to pass, city parks, which are the main venues for these events, and the users of the parks, not just those in attendance at the events, will be affected. Parks are established to reduce healthy lifestyles and community wellness. This could be affected with an increase in the amount of cigarette and tobacco products littered that will be left behind. Cigarette butts are the most commonly littered item in the United States. The litter poses the dangers of choking and burning hazards to our small children. The litter can also be ingested by our pets and wildlife, not to mention it will reduce the beauty of our parks and increase maintenance calls for our parks and recreation departments. There is community support for keeping our parks smoke-free as well. In two thousand twelve, a study was conducted by University of Nebraska Medical Centers, College of Public Health graduate students, to assess the public's knowledge and attitudes about smoke-free parks in Douglas County. Two hundred and thirty people were surveyed, and seventy-five percent would be... Or in support of the parks going smoke-free. Eighty percent of those in favor believe that it will reduce... I'm sorry. Eighty percent of those in favor reduce that the exposure of secondhand smoke. Similar comments included, "We have the right to breathe in clean air no matter where we are," and "We would not have to worry about kids being exposed to secondhand smoke while at parks." The reason why Motec is in opposition of the proposed changes to amend aforementioned sections of the Omaha Municipal Code is that we have strided over years without working tobacco prevention and control, and do not want to see the undermined passing of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
My name's Bonnie Cusentino. I'm at ten ten, South Sixty-seventh Street. And when I first heard about this, I had no idea of the implications that are so far-reaching, and I doubt many members of the public have. When I see Mr. Klein, he presents himself and his intention to do demonstrations of somewhat of an art form, that he's going to promote charity events and use things from his store, and he wants to go out and do this. And that is well and good, but this ordinance, if passed, I feel would make all of us in the public very dependent on the goodness and the morality of the people who are able to go out and sell cigarettes. And yes, I'm saying cigarettes here. It's hand-rolled cigars, but it's also cigarettes. They can be hand-rolled too, in the public forum in our parks. In my past, I've coordinated public events, art gatherings, so forth. I know what dealing with smoke is like for the public. At open forums, at art events in the public, I want to look around and see the grandmother in the wheelchair, hooked up to oxygen, enjoying Shakespeare on the Green. I don't want her suffering from smoke. Also, as a grandmother, I feel like at public park events, there are booths and tables set up with advertising all over about snow cones, cotton candy, whatever's on sale. I don't want to see cigarette advertising in that lineup in our parks in front of our children. And this ordinance, when you think about it, it's not just Mr. Klein, it's everyone who will seize the opportunity to make money by selling cigarettes, to go out and set up folding tables and booths and advertising in our public parks, at festivals that we enjoy. And then what are they going to do? They're going to sell it, they're going to be within their rights, the children are going to see this occurring, the elderly are going to suffer, they're not going to come to the events after being subjected to this a few times. So, I would ask you from the bottom of my heart, just consider what this is opening up here. It's not about Mr. Klein, it's about everybody who will seize this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public carers closed. Ms. Milton.
I was wondering if Mr. Klein could come back up.
Charles Klein, five zero three, South Eleventh Street. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Could you go into a little more detail? I guess I was somewhat concerned about this, thinking there's going to be cigarettes that are now going to be sold. I mean, I think Bonnie, I mean, made some good points.
Oh, yeah.
And I think... Was it your intention, though? You talked about cigars, I didn't hear you talk about cigarettes yet. The ordinance just talks about tobacco. Could you give me some examples of what you wanted to do?
Well, I mean, I personally look this... I have children of my own, and...
Just your name and address again, for the record.
Oh, Charles Klein, five oh three, South Eleventh Street. I have children of my own, and I'm very much concerned as the rest of the public is. Why shouldn't we be? We always should be. Our intention for this has always been from cigars. The cigar events that we've had in the past, be that they could be outdoors, or for the purposes of if, say, for instance, somebody wants to do a fundraiser for somebody who's, you know, possibly dying from cancer, and they would like our participation, sure, I would help them out. If other events that might have to do with, well, we've conducted one for Sacred Heart, a fundraiser for them. So, the idea, and Mr. Welsh and I, we have common ground. The idea of doing it in our schools, or in parks, or in city parks... No. That was never the intention for any of this. Intention was for private entities, private property, if someone was having a party somewhere, they want us to do that. As we understood from the original way the city ordinance was written, our tobacco license was restricted to the actual physical property we were on, and did not allow us to do in a legal manner, the way in which we would like to do, to have an event for somebody at another physical location. So, this is the reason why this ordinance was even brought about.
So, I mean, and would you be opposed to if we limited it to just cigars?
No.
As opposed to cigarettes? You don't have any intention of selling cigarettes?
No, 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 no. That... No. That business, albeit I do sell that, that's none of our attention whatsoever. So, as far as I'm concerned, I restrict it to cigars, and that would be it.
But I think that you have good intentions, but we're passing an ordinance where other people who may not have your good intentions can use...
I absolutely realize that. I absolutely realize that. I understand that. You know, and, you know, I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions that anyone might have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. City Legal, if someone could weigh in on a question.
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney.
Tom, can we limit to just cigars, and with the cigarette, and chewing tobacco people have a leg to file some kind of legal complaint?
I think you could try. I hesitate because the state law is... Licensing is initially controlled by state law, and it doesn't draw the distinction in granting a license. It talks about a tobacco license. Although it doesn't... On the other hand, it doesn't say you couldn't, so I think you could try, yes.
Sort of like gambling a little bit on how about the outcome might be, huh?
Well, certainly. You would be... Again, it would depend on whether you're writing something that conflicts with state law, and we're dealing with the areas of state law where it says nothing. So, whether that's a conflict or not is something that, you know, is certainly arguable. I don't think it's a conflict. I think you could do it and would have a good chance of succeeding and holding it up in court, but yet I'll admit that the state law doesn't specifically say you can do it.
Second question. Mr. Welsh wants to modify it to where the sales of these are on the premise of the license, the license premise. Are we able to say it has to always be indoors, or can, like alcohol, can they have... With SDLs, they have a beer garden, can you have a tobacco garden?
Well, yes, you could restrict this temporary location to an indoor location. I would point out that the annual license right now is not restricted to an indoor location. It just talks about a designated place of business. That could be outdoors. Vending machines are designated places of business. You get a license for a vending machine, and there's no restrictions as to whether that's indoors or outdoors. You could have that restriction if you want, I would just point out, it's not there now.
Mm-hmm. So, we could... This could mirror the SDLs for beer and for liquor, couldn't it?
It does in many ways, and I'd point out, an SDL doesn't have to be outdoors. SDLs are routinely issued for indoors or outdoors.
Okay.
You could do something... So, this does mirror that, in that it doesn't talk about indoors or outdoors. You could restrict it to indoors if you wish, or you could restrict it to outdoors if you wish, for that matter.
So, just like a liquor SDL, if someone wants to have a tobacco tent down at the College World Series, then they could apply under this particular ordinance, correct?
Correct. And I would point out that there's certainly a good faith argument to be made that they could do that now. They would just have to get the twenty-five-dollar annual license, and that this process actually makes it more expensive and harder to have extra temporary locations than current law does. This says twenty-five dollars a day. Arguably, if you wanted to have a tent at the College World Series, you'd just go get an annual license at the College World Series for twenty-five bucks for the whole year. And so, this actually... I listened to the argument about how this expands, and I think, well, that's not entirely true, because what this would do would say, no, you can't get that annual license any place where you could instead get the temporary license, and the temporary license is going to cost you more.
Thank you. That was it.
Thanks. Mr. Pauls.
Yes, could I have a comment from Legal? As I see it, I can go to a certain bar and smoke a cigar. Is that not true?
Yes, that is true.
So, there are exceptions to the smoking rule, you might say.
Yes, cigar bars are a specific exception to the smoking rules.
Okay, so, why could not this be the exception, then?
I think it could. This, I would point out, that cigar bar restrictions talk about where you can smoke. This doesn't talk about where you can smoke, this talks about where you can sell the product. So, they sell cigarettes in cigar bars, but you can't smoke them there.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth, I'll ask you a couple of questions, too. A slim line of questioning, as Mr. Thompson had. So, there does appear to be the opportunity and maybe the justification for tightening this up a little bit, as we're considering this idea. And it sounds like we could go ahead and limit what it applies to in terms of tobacco products. If cigars are truly the novelty item and truly the main interest here, that's something that could be done. But then also, in terms of usage, I mean, I think the intention is to do the occasional private party, or the, you know, festival or event, or a thing of that nature where this would make sense for a vendor. But I share some concern about, well, does this mean somebody could just get a temporary license and go in the park and start selling, or, you know, can they be on the corner of the street? Can you explain that a little bit?
This does not have any criteria in it as to where you can and cannot get that temporary license. I agree. That's also true of the annual license. It does not have any criteria of where you can and can't get the license. So, we've just kind of piggybacked onto that and gone that direction. If you wanted to write criteria, qualifications, some places are not... You cannot get it. Yeah, you could do that. You could write it in that the issue... The temporary license could not be issued for a location on city property or in a city park. You could include that if you wish. We didn't include that on the initial draft, because we were just following the same general parameters that's there for the annual license.
Okay. Might suggest that maybe that's something the Law Committee might want to look into after the hearing today. Mr. Grenant.
Chaz?
Yes, sir. Charles Klein, five zero three, South Eleventh Street.
I always consider you're sort of a specialty industry.
Yes, it is.
How large is this industry in Omaha?
Very small.
Very small.
Very small. When you look at premium tobacco stores such as ourself, I would consider there being seven. Seven, that would be it. That would include specialty premium cigar stores in addition to the two, three cigar bars as well.
So, the magnificent seven. I haven't heard where you or the industry is saying that you're the one that's actually going out and marketing this idea. It are folks that come to you...
No, no.
And say, you know, "We'd like to have..." And do tobacco rolling...
Right, right.
At a specific event. So, we won't see signs...
No.
From your industry on streetlight poles, advertising this type?
No, I would not foresee that at all, being a pretty pragmatic person. You know, our view on this is, is as an industry, we're looked at very closely to begin with. And not to speak for other elements of the tobacco world, but in the cigar world, we've always, as an industry, nationally as an industry, we've always positioned ourselves as a very specialty, unique classification of the tobacco product world. And with that comes special and more restrictive guidelines on how we operate. And on a national level, particularly for the cigar industries, you find events where we're asked to participate in. Again, particular rolling events. Somebody wants to have a casino night for a benefit, well, they'd like to have cigars there. You know, again, other benefits for nonprofits, or just the occasional, let's have a, you know, let's have a party, and we would like to have cigars at the event. So, that's how we conduct ourselves. As other people, I can't really speak for. As far as us, you know, our word and handshake means a lot to us.
Well, I see that's evident today, sitting down with the opposition and having some cordial conversations. For one council member, I say, "Thank you for doing that," and it sounds like you continue to do that, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. With Mr. Welsh, I'm sure we don't agree on everything, but nobody else does. And my whole...
I don't agree with Mr. Welsh.
Well, that's... Yeah. But, you know, my position is, you know, to have it, you know, where Mr. Welsh had concerns, you know, those street corners across some schools, I mean, that's ridiculous, you know? And I think that, from our perspective, for what we're looking for, put that in the ordinance. You know, I think as, you know, specific site locations, private property and the such, I would be all for that. And in regards to what Mr. Mumgarth indicated regarding that it'd be more expensive, well, guess what? If you want to play, you got to pay. And I think that part of that ordinance, in order to have a special SDL, and my preference would be, is that you should already have a physical presence, location for a tobacco retailer, then you'd have the ability then to go out and get an SDL, and not just divert around that and just go get an SDL to go sell. You know, I'd like to see a little bit more restriction, put a little bit more teeth in there to allow the legitimate people to be able to do this.
More of a class act than working out of a back-up for a man.
Yeah, yeah. You don't get anywhere, anywhere going on the cheap.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The representative of Motec, if you could come down, please. I'm sorry, and if you can give your name and address again for me, please.
Michael Robinson, 3801 Hunter Street.
Michael, given the discussion that you've heard today, and the potential for, and we're just talking potential here, but we're talking about the potential for restricting it, restricting this license so that it wouldn't be in parks, it wouldn't be near schools, it would be on private property, I guess, given what you've heard today, does that give your organization, and I know you can't speak for everybody within your organization, but, you know, just given how your operation works and the people that you know within it, would that give you more comfort if we were, if it were to be restricted in some of those kinds of ways?
Well, definitely. I think as far as changing the ordinance to private events, if it wasn't, you're sure that we can, Mr. Taylor, focus more on private events, if, you know, tobacco sales, you know, are approved. But I think, you know, as I mentioned before, speaking on behalf of Motec, and also myself, when we're talking about the smoke-free, tobacco-free parks, it's an issue where majority, I mean, everyone here has a family, you know, myself and family. You have parks are used for, you know, physical fitness, outings, and I think the last thing, you know, like I said, once again, speaking for organization, you want to, you know, smell is tobacco smoke. And I respect everyone's, you know, rights as far as, you know, what they choose to do, but I think from our organization's standpoint, our goal is to eliminate, you know, tobacco use, you know, in those areas. But with that being said, if we're able to have some leeway towards a, we can, as an organization, as well as you work with, you know, the city council here, focus on private, you know, private events only, not toe to our, you know, jazz and greens, as was mentioned earlier, or other events that are similar, but just private events, if that's done, I think we'll be, you know, happy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, first of all, I just want to say a few things. You know, when you talk about smoking in parks, I did have the privilege of going to the Maha Music Fest, and I can't say what the tobacco odor was, but there were some interesting odors at Maha. And I don't know whether that was cigarettes, tobacco, or what. But there was that, and I did, it was dark, so, and it was late, although it was a pretty good moon out. I couldn't tell what was going on exactly. But there were a lot of Douglas County sheriffs working, so I assume they were on top of it. But on this ordinance, I do want to thank Mr. Klein for his spirit of engagement on this, and being open to the GASP folks and the Motec folks, and being flexible and trying to achieve something here and find common ground and move forward. I do think it makes sense to restrict this to those who already have an existing tobacco permit or license, that we don't want someone who doesn't, much like we do the liquor industry, if you're already in the industry, that maybe that you have shown some degree of responsibility and compliance with rules and regulations and things like that. And I do like the idea of the private property, and not in, you know, obviously, that goes to say that it wouldn't be in parks. As far as tasking Mr. Mungard, maybe you could come forward.
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney.
Do you think that the amendment process can be done in a week, or do you need more time to do that?
I think we could do it in a week.
Okay. So that would be my request. And do you see any problem in restricting this just to people who already have an existing tobacco permit?
I think it's already written that way.
Right.
That this just piggybacks on the existing requirement to get a license at a designated location. So at least, I'll go back and look through it, but that's the way I was intending it when I wrote it, is that first you have to be a dealer that has a permanent location, and then you can get the temporary location licenses in addition to that. But I'll make sure that it says that.
And I think what I heard from more than four was existing licensee, cigars, private property. Did you hear that, too?
Yeah, I mean, I'll probably write it on the negative side, sort of say that it has to be private property, it can't be public property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Next item.
Section 15, Day 2, regarding the sale and distribution of alcohol spirits before noon on Sundays to authorize such sale beginning at 6:00 a.m. on Sundays.
Public hearing on item number 45 is today. Are there any proponents?
Jim Moylan again, 8424 West Center Road, representing the Nebraska License Beverage Association again. The state law, LB 861, was passed in 2012, I'm saying, that allowed the sale of spirits from 6:00 in the morning until noon. As you know now, they can sell beer, wine, and champagne on Sunday mornings, but then afternoon, they can sell spirits, wine, and beer. So this just brings it into conformity, you know, with the state law. I talked to the young lady out in the licensed beverage office, and she said probably half the calls that they will get will be, can we sell hard liquor on Sunday mornings? And generally, there are restaurants that have a brunch, you know, and they can sell beer and wine, but a lot of them want Bloody Mary or some other type of drink prior to noon. So they'd like to see this change, make the law in conformity with the state law, and we'd be happy with it. Any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none. Any opponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Nicole Kerrett, Executive Director of Project Extra Mile, 12165 West Center Road. We believe our job in these moments is to share what we know from the literature so that you can make your decision based on knowing all of the facts. In Nebraska, we rank second in the nation for adult binge drinking rates, and Omaha was ranked the number 11 most binge drinking city out of nearly 200 that were indexed during that same time. We would reiterate that these types of policy decisions, like the one before you today, do not happen apart from these larger implications. The Task Force on Community Preventive Services recommends maintaining limits on the days or hours during which alcohol can legally be sold, based upon a systematic review of available studies on the topic. Policies regulating the availability of alcohol, including maintaining limits on the number of hours when alcoholic beverages can be sold, are proven effective public health strategies to prevent the health and social harms that result from excessive binge drinking behavior among adults and youth. We've seen recently too many instances of alcohol-related crime, disturbance, and the need for our valuable city resources to be directed to respond to alcohol-related problems. When we increase access to alcohol, the literature tells us that those related problems are sure to follow, and that when we do, we all pay the price. This is an opportunity for you council members to balance the economic benefit that those few hours of additional liquor sales might bring with the potential consequences to the city's public health and safety through the additional loosening of liquor sales regulations. Again, the legislature acknowledged that we locally should have the opportunity to define what our community looks like regarding our alcohol landscape in this instance, and we must entrust, and we do entrust, that you'll make a fair decision based upon the information you've heard before you today. And I also just brought a copy of the Community Guide for Preventing Excessive Alcohol Consumption. So these are basically the recommendations based on the literature for reducing excessive alcohol consumption and the related harms, so. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. No lights, next item.
Item 46.
Ordinance to amend the ALMS code, section 30, Day 261 and 263, to clarify the periods allowed for the sale and consumption of fireworks, to clarify the procedure for issuing of a permit to sell fireworks.
Public hearing on item number 46 is today. Are there any proponents? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 47, Special Ordinance, special tax assessment for the condemned buildings group, number 2012-1.
Public hearing on item number 47 today is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 48, ordinance awarding a contract to Republic Parking Systems for the management and operation of certain city parking facilities.
Public hearing on item number 48 is today. Are there any proponents?
Ken Smith, Parking Manager, City of Omaha, and I have representatives from Republic Parking answering questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, Ken, can you come back up?
Ken Smith, Parking Manager.
Who's the current company that replaced Mr. Monahan's group?
Central Parking.
And was there something about how they're operating that you're uncomfortable with? I just wonder why is the change?
I think this is an opportunity for a fresh start, to kind of draw a line where we were headed with the parking program. We went through an RFP process, there were six firms that gave us proposals, we shortlisted that to three. There was a committee of five members, and the committee chose Republic Parking based on the qualifications that they presented.
Okay. That was one question. The other question I had is, there's some confusion, at least among one of my constituents who emailed in, who's wondering if this was going to result in the loss of jobs, or has somehow scaled back your parking meter enforcement division? And he thought five people might be losing their jobs, but I think it has maybe to do confusing. Central Park maybe, or Central Parking Management might have some employees that may not stay on with a new company or could lose their job, but there's no change in parking meters, is there?
Well, part of the RFP, there was an addendum to evaluate the enforcement side of the parking program, whether that was to look at, to take in that and have Republic Parking, you know, doing that program. So there's some evaluation we will go through in the next few months to take a look at that program as we come up in the next budget cycle.
So for the '24 cycle, there won't be any changes in parking meter enforcement or potential?
2014, or?
2014.
2014. There is potential for five positions that would be eliminated.
Okay. So the constituent probably had it right, and I'm the one who's confused, because there is a possibility, then, you're going to state publicly, that parking meter enforcement could be proposed to go private.
Yeah, well, the thought here is to have a comprehensive parking system, that we have a one-stop shop for parking, which will include, you know, the enforcement side of things. So we need to take a look at that. Again, it's based on budgets, evaluations of different programs that we could offer through creating a new system, so.
And is there currently five people in parking meter enforcement?
There's currently seven positions, and five of them are open right now, so there's two that would be left over. That gives me an option to look at other areas, because it's not just downtown, it could be Snowburn Sees, Firehider Parking outside the downtown area, at Zarben, around UNO, those areas that we need to evaluate as well.
Okay, so this, I think, would represent a fairly significant change in policy if the city's going to go to private parking enforcement, whether it be meter or otherwise, sign restricted. So I would assume that there will be an ordinance to do that, or are you contemplating, if we approve this, that we're approving the flexibility for you to go ahead and do that without further public input?
No, the RFP had an addendum, and so we had that process already up in place, so if we decide three, four months down the road that this is the best route to go, we've already gone through the RFP process versus having to get six proposals, again, go through the selection process. This just gives us that opportunity to, if we decide to go that route, we can, well, yes, we'll have to make the ordinance changes to have them serve as our agent, but I want to define private, there's still employees, I call them contracted employees, they're just on that side, they bring in the expertise nationally that, you know, I can draw from, whether it's enforcement, on-street, off-street, wherever it is, that I can bring in employees. I have guys that come in from Denver, or Ann Arbor, or wherever they're drawing upon that have done this already. So that's very helpful for me to get the program kick-started more quickly, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kratz, are you still back there?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney.
If this indeed comes to fruition, where it's Mr. Smith's recommendation to outsource parking enforcement in the city, can you confirm that it will require at least one ordinance to do that?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I'm not sure how to answer that. I haven't seen the addendum, I haven't seen the RFP. I'm not sure how that was worded, so I guess I'm kind of caught blind as far as trying to answer that.
Well, today is just the public hearing, maybe before we vote, you can
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, with regard to outsourcing those tasks, what potential concerns do you have with regard to potential liability or dedication in terms of situations that may go awry? You know, let's just say a vehicle of the contractor's on the street and doesn't have its flashers on, and a car plows into it and somebody gets hurt.
I guess a couple of responses. Number one, you asked what issues there might be. One, I need to look at the state law, I think there's some limitations, but I don't recall what those are right offhand. And secondly, if we do have a private contractor, obviously, we're going to have required substantial amount of insurance to cover those type of situations.
Okay. And then, in terms of handling the money, like
There would be a bond, that would be pretty typical.
Okay. And now, would the parking meter, Mr. Smith, maybe you could come back up, would they also, you know, empty the meters, the ones that still have the coins in them?
Sure. I think, Ken Smith, Parking Manager, City of Omaha, I think this is a process we're going to have to evaluate. Certainly, there's benefits of having it on this side of doing, and there's benefits of keeping some in-house, so, again, it's going to be evaluation, and looking at budgets, looking at the different programs we can create. The whole idea behind looking at the enforcement on their side is to create a parking ambassador-type thing. I think we've seen ambassadors down in the old market, where they're not only, now they're not only just doing enforcement, they got maps, or they can say, hey, here's a good restaurant, or go get a good cigar from Chaz over here. So I think those are the opportunities we're looking from, an economic development standpoint, spitting that information out on the street.
Now, if you're the recipient of a citation issued by one of these ambassadors, they can't exactly go to the United Nations and have the dispute resolved, right?
Right.
So, back to Mr. Kratz, how would that work? Can you have, under the law, private contractors issuing parking citations?
That's something I'd have to check with state law. I know there's an issue there, I just, it's been years since I've looked at the actual language.
Okay. Well, I think that we probably, since this is the public hearing, need to get some more answers on that.
I could
I just want to make sure, and I'll give you a chance to talk in a second, that what we're being asked to approve, is it next week, Mr. Clark? What we're being asked to approve next week, if it includes the flexibility to proceed right to that step, that we have the answers to these questions. If there's another step that we have to go through, then there's less urgency in terms of getting your answer, so maybe we can sort that out. But did you want to say something?
Yes. First, I'll answer the one you just did. Basically, this contract right now is just to overtake what Central Parking has been offering, that's just off-street facilities. At the time, we do decide to go with enforcement side or another function or element of the parking, we would amend the contract and bring that back to you for that approval. So that's kind of where we would be with the contracts and initiate with Republic Parking.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Can you, before we're asked to vote on this, come up with the, maybe with finances assistance, the appropriation amount for the parking division, parking meter, parking enforcement within Public Works' budget?
Yes, we can do that. Keep in mind just a couple of things. One is that the enforcement mechanism has always resided for the parking meters within the traffic maintenance, traffic shop area, and that's kind of a rotated between a number of different employees. We've had some positions that are currently vacant in that area that have not been filled, so we've been utilizing existing staff. The intent was, is that if we proceed with going to use a The intent was is that if we proceed with going to use a contractor from the outside to perform that function for us, there would not be any loss of jobs, we just wouldn't fill the jobs that are currently vacant at this point in time. The other intent is, is that there would be some individuals that would be moved from the current traffic maintenance division over to the parking maintenance, excuse me, parking management division, and that's currently being proposed into the 2014 budget.
Thank you. I just was wondering if there is going to be savings either through the transfers of employees or attrition? How many of those positions are vacant? What the total appropriations are, so we can have the bottom line as we consider the budget next week?
Bob Stube, Public Works, we can provide that information to you. I think the other thing too is with regard to, Ken worked in the City of Lincoln previously, and I believe the enforcement mechanism, from what I understand, was done by a private contractor in the City of Lincoln.
Are the traffic maintenance employees who rotate through the parking enforcement division, are they currently having their salaries and compensation benefits paid for out of the revenue generated through meters and the administrative expense attributed to the parking citations, or do they come from some other source?
Bob Stube, Public Works, again, the individuals that are in the traffic maintenance would move over to the parking management function, and that would be funded by all the revenue that comes from the parking management activities. So it would be anything related to the revenue generated at the parking structures, the parking lots, parking meters, and also part of the revenue that comes from the actual citation itself.
So maybe it would help reduce Mr. McCoy's budget?
Potentially, it could reduce Mr. McCoy's budget, it would reduce Mr. Murthy's, Coty's budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the third reading of public hearing on agenda items number 49 through 56 shall be held on September 10. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, see, the public hearing on agenda items number 57 through 64 shall be held on the second reading.
Second. Roll call. Jarom, Melton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Mr. President, 352. We are now adjourned.